How's everybody doing?
Good.
All right. Public meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. I think everyone's here for the, I know Josh will be giving a presentation after the sewer presentation, but everyone's aware that the court recently approved a sewer line expansion from the plant over to the new multi-facility building that we just built. The engineers, and I'll let Chad get more in the detail, it was designed basically off of the contour of the land. They get the product down the pipe the best without mechanical assistance. But there were some discussions from some of the residents as far as where that line is going and can it also benefit some of the property owners. And I think it, I think we can be successful with that. But since the court already took action on the original design, we have to have a public meeting to have you guys come in and let's talk about this and see if we can't find the best. And I think we will because Chad went back and, you gonna put that up there?
Yeah, I picked the, picked the design that's got-
It should have all three. You might not be able to see it, but you'll see, the engineers went back and put a design in place that shows three different lines. We want, obviously, the best option as well as you do. So if there are some landowners out there that want to tie in, one of the big pieces of property, obviously with the contour, that's cutting right through that piece of property and it may not be desirable for the landowner. So we want to make sure that everybody involved in this situation here, we hear from you and we try to put the best plan on the table that we can all agree to. So that's why we're here tonight. And I know that Chad's gonna be talking, but Randy, did you say you wanted to get up and talk? No? You wanna get us started?
I'll get us started. I think about everybody in here knows me. If you don't, I'm Randy Green. I'm chairman of Marshall County Sanitation. And I don't know how it happened, but here I am. So, and what I looked at, first Mike Thompson had come to me, he's the one that's got the biggest parcel of land there and it was gonna be cutting his farm in half. And I said, "Well, you know, that's, that wouldn't be acceptable for me." And I understand completely why it's not for him. But the issue was, from what I understand, Chad, you correct me if my numbers are wrong, but the original design, the one that was accepted by court was like for 749,000, right in that neighborhood. And basically what it's gonna do, that would do, is cross the parkway, come through the middle of Mike's farm, or 40 acres thereabout, and go straight to the new 911 Center and Road Department and stop. It would, I know that we're looking at dollars, but it appears to be awful self-serving at the same time, that it's not, it's not gonna benefit anybody, really. The 911 Center, I signed off here a while back with the Health Department for a 500-gallon holding tank where they could use their facilities there and just pump it every once in a while and it would last, it would do well like that. So really, like I said, I understand that we're watching dollars, but does that make the best sense at all? So I asked Chad, I talked with Mike, and he had, of course, the property owners down Frankfurt, is it Frankfurt Drive or Frankfurt Road?
Frankfurt Road.
Frankfurt Road. Coming around the corner at the 68 and then down to in front of the park. Property owners all along through there, the, some are new owners, are starting to develop more, others are anticipating developing. We've got development that's wanting to get started across the road. We've got a subdivision with 33 houses, I think I counted in it last, and are still building. We've got our county park there that desperately could use sanitation. There's a lot of reasons that we look at a different design or different route. And, I don't know, I mean, maybe, wasn't any of us thinking, but Justin, it's like my old granddad said, you know, sometimes it's common sense, 'cause lord, we wouldn't have enough grease to skillet. So what we gotta do is think about this. I asked Chad if he could run the line, make an alignment down Frankfurt and then turn and instead of going like we normally do along the right-of-way for easement, go on the backside of each property line facing 68 and facing Frankfurt. One reason is it would be shorter. Another reason is you're not as likely to run into near as many utilities and issues on the back of property lines as you would out on the right-of-way. I know we run into blacktop driveways and gas lines, water lines, electricity, cable and all that. It would be a lot easier dig. Bottom line is, the difference between the run that was originally agreed upon and the one that would go behind these property lines, which landowners have conveyed to me that they would be more than happy to give easements to get this up through there so they could use it, looked like the difference was about between 749 and 767. You're talking less than $20,000 to serve all of these people. That's not my call. And I understand, you know, I present it, you do what you want to, and we'll keep things running and make pretty water over the plant. That's my job. But, you know, if, if we can consider that, consider the possibilities, development for our county, I think it's a no-brainer. And keeping in mind, I don't know what kind of money is available. Again, that's not my job, that's yours. But we're terminating right there at the 911 Center. I don't know what it costs to get under the highway. I don't remember. I know we crossed 641 four times on our last dig and 68 once. But if there's no issues, there are contingencies that are built into these bids, and there's a 15% contingency built into that, it's public record. Looks like, I can't see that far, it was about 85,000, I believe, contingency. So I mean, we could be looking at possibility of going further, maybe getting on the road, getting across the road, if we had no hiccups, if we ran through there and everything went fine. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a contractor, I've just watched them dig a lot. The likelihood of having many problems with this new alignment is not near as high as it would be if we were running along the highway. So it's something for you gentlemen to consider, wish the court would consider it. Let's go with the new alignment for less than $20,000 and maybe the possibility of getting a service across the road. From there on, I understand, we've ran into this before on other projects, it would be up to landowners that would need to get a little skin in the game themselves. Can they can't do it all? There's only so much can be done. But also know that if you're gonna get something done, you better do it while the digging's going on. Who knows, in a couple of years, I mean, this may be our, our main line that's run to be expanded on in future, let's talk four, five, three, four years. Well, three or four years, you may not be here. And we may have a court that don't care about the infrastructure or the property owners or expansion and growth. So if we're gonna do it, we need to strongly consider doing it while we've got the contractors there and doing the job. That's basically it. I'm just telling you what I see and money, it's like I told you before, I don't know much besides possums and sawdust. I've seen them dig a couple of days recently.
When you say cross the highway-
Yes.
-we're talking 68-
Yes.
Cross, what, what, what you are thinking would be cross there where we stop?
Exactly.
The line?
Where it's terminating now, is really close, best I can tell by the map, to straight across the road from the property line between the park and the properties on the south side. Where you would want to run a line anyway would be along the property lines. That's where we're, just like the easements, we're trying to get on the back of these others. It's terminating perfect place or close to it. I mean, Chad may say-
You're saying in between the, the last property owner there and then our property at the park?
Yeah, the white fence.
Right, right across there, okay. Yeah.
I mean, if nothing else, it might not, maybe it couldn't happen. But if it could, it would get us over there, have the service provided, and if someone wanted to develop and wish to get a little skin in the game with the county, then we might be able to pick up the park and those houses. My job is to look out for the plant. We had to get it compliant or self-sufficient. With a huge amount of help from fiscal court, we're absolutely compliant and believe it or not, we're pretty much self-sufficient. We're starting to carry our own weight. And we can't, we can't treat more for nothing. So we gotta look at making money too, everybody does.
So what does his, Chad's, the new option there, do we know how many that would potentially pick up? Or do we even-
If you look on the map there, it starts, of course, it's not occupied now, see the trailer park on Frankfurt?
Right.
Okay, you've got that property there that could be developed and I can't say it will be, but I know that they would like to. You've got the old Normal Marshall Water Plant, which is Bruce Hanks, I've talked with him, he is definitely interested in it. And you've got the house next door, we've got Mike Thompson, we've got Camperama, we've got the Curran property, and what's the next property up, Mike?
We on the yellow? Can I stop you?
Yeah, green.
Green.
You're on the green?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I thought when you, the yellow was the-
The yellow is what we voted on.
Was the, what we voted on, the green, okay. I'm following you now.
If you just come on the on-ramp off the parkway the wrong way and turn left, you're gonna be all of those properties.
Yep.
That's, that's what we're looking at, rather than putting a line out there through the middle of a man's ground and everybody that needs it can see it but can't use it. If it was million-dollar difference, half-million-dollar difference, lord, we'd have problems. But we're looking at less than $20,000, the way I figure it, and I may be wrong.
I'm gonna pass this around so folks can see that. You're gonna see three different lines. The green one is that, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Randy, but-
No, it's fine.
The green one is what we're talking about is the 677, or the 767. Yellow one that we were just talking about is the one that the court approved based off the contour lines. So that way you can see on the map what we're talking about. Do we have, do we have anybody here that's actually, as you look at this map, that you may have property that's not directly in contact with that green line? Are you on the other side of 68? You're on the other side of 68? Where at in relationship to the entrance to Mike Miller Park?
Right next door.
Right next door to it?
And we're on the corner, directly across from Mike's barbershop and Camperama.
Okay.
314 US Highway 68 on the corner.
Okay. I'm gonna have, 'cause I, I asked Chad to be here as far as the engineering of it. If I remember, you can see the contour lines, if I remember, right there at the off-ramp on 68, and you can come up here, Chad, and so that you can, there was, if you can just explain a little bit about if it does or if it doesn't apply, the actual, the way of the terrain and the contour.
As far as getting across the 68?
Yes.
I've got a bigger map here if anybody, if anybody wants to look at it.
Yeah, if you wanna come up and look.
Larger map here, the teacher can see the digital screen there. Basically, the review that the judge is talking about in the contour maps, unfortunately, Highway 68 is a high one. Everything breaks north and south off of Highway 68. So there are limitations to how far you can go in picking people up with the gravity sewer before you have to start pumping the water across. We had looked at, when we initially started this endeavor, we looked at two options, one serving the north side of Highway 68, the other one serving the south side of Highway 68. Both of them with a pressurizer lift stations at the extent. So for the north side, we looked at a lift station down there by the park, which would serve a much larger area on the north side of 68, and we did the same thing on the south side of Highway 68. Now, to say that, I'm not sitting here telling you we could not run the gravity line underneath the road to pick up a few customers with the depth that we're carrying. Now, as far as feasibility, going back and picking up the people in the subdivision around the park, I can tell you right now that that wouldn't be economically, you know, the right thing to do, you know, just due to the depth and the hills and everything over there on that side of the road. But those that are right there along 68, there's potential there, we could build that in your project to pick you guys and, you know, customers up with things in relative short experience. Assuming that the equipment could be secured from adjacent property owners to get across the highway there.
We'd like to try to run gravity as much as possible, but it's not impossible, you can push it anywhere.
True.
Just, just gravity is a lot more space, but that's not what we do, so that's what they're looking at. It might go anywhere.
Is the state highway your department?
I don't think so.
No? Again, we're directly across the street, we're the first road on the exit at 314 coming up the ramp on 47. The state highway department is proposing moving our entrance. And I have already asked them twice, have you spoken to anybody at Marshall County about other projects that are going on? And then we've also heard that there's potentially some road widening going on there? You know, so I'm like, well, if we're gonna dig it up, why don't we do all of it at one time? And get some coordination? Because, I mean, they're, they're after us right now to move our, they should've asked us when they put 69 in, but they didn't. And so now they've come back and asked us to move our entrance. So the road's gonna be torn up.
When you say move your entrance, move it-
Away from-
Away from 69?
Down the ramp.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It's only, it's only 13 feet or 14 feet or something like that, and they're buying one foot times 290 feet of our property down the line.
Now, if I remember off the top of my head, the further you go away from 69, the elevation drops.
Drops.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to have this conversation, because depending on where your property is, as Randy was saying, you know, we like to have the gravity flow, but depending on where the property is, there are some limitations, which doesn't mean that we can't, it just means that, you know, this line here, if we were to do another piece of property that has limitations, then there's gonna be additional cost or more equipment, I guess would be the fairer way to say that, Chad, or?
More materials and again, there's a break point in the cost of the sewer. There comes a break point where you have to go to the sewer so deep to pick up the additional customers that is cost prohibitive, and it makes more sense to spend that money on the north side of the road rather than try and spend extra money to get people tied on to the south side of the road.
Our other concern is if you take it to the back of their properties starting out, then if we ever do get added in, then that's gonna be an obstacle at that point because it's gonna be at the back of their properties instead of the front of their properties as we normally do in sewer installations.
I understand. And Randy addressed a little bit of that utility congestion, and if they're also talking about roadway widening, that limits that amount of available space on roadway section that the sewer line can even be built, you know, in a safe manner, you know, where you have available right-of-way easement areas to do that without putting in some of those front overstepping. Looking at the contours, I think the best place is the back property line, the simple fact that many of the properties along the south side of Highway 68, if the sewer's on the front of their house, they may even have to put it up, pump into it, because it would be that much greater difference from the back of the house to the front where the roadway is. But the good thing is the county owns a property that runs adjacent to Highway 68, as Randy discussed, which would be a good spot, I think the county would give an easement to get across the highway there. So that would make a lot of sense, and I don't think that would cut you guys off from any kind of access, even if one pipe was to cross Highway 68 and then branch out in different directions, running east and west along the south.
Pick it up from that direction then, coming, coming back towards the state building?
Potentially, again, there's limitations, but yes, there is potential.
What, let me ask you this. Based on that side that we're talking about, we are talking about a few that are somewhat undeveloped, does it matter that, you know what I mean, like, what all can that handle? Say that you end, you end up getting a 100-bed hotel or something like that, is that, does that become-
It could be designed to handle whatever the display capacity is.
Okay, so it's not an issue?
Yeah, it's really-
What's it designed at?
Well, I'm saying that what we're talking about, we just went under and hacked that.
The way that we were looking at it from a design standpoint, we were looking at it as an eight-inch standard gravity sewer. We weren't looking at it as a high-capacity 12-inch or better, due to the nature of the customers it would serve on the south side of Highway 68. Now, that said, we are limited by the parkway, so we know we're gonna have to pump it across the parkway or I-69, there's no way the gravity would flow that across there. So irregardless, yeah, and even the north side of Highway 68 where you guys are at, any, the way we looked at initially, all of that water on the north side of Highway 68 would have to pump across 68 and then it would flow across the I-69 corridor into the tributary plant. So from a capacity standpoint, sewer size standpoint, I don't think we're looking at serving a large tributary area with this initial phase for gravity sewer now. That leads into the alignment that we initially looked at through the types of property and potential for development. Just real quick and just background information, the reason why the line started here was just for potential for development. Looking at the contours, having a line here could conceivably serve this area down and this area more. So basically take this area, let it drain south, this area let it drain north, if it were developed. Now, what you don't see here is what we had planned for a Phase 2 project, which was gonna do very much the same thing that the green line does, it was gonna branch off here and wrap around behind your houses. That, that's always been in the plan, it just wasn't necessarily in Phase 1. So what Randy's talking about and the district proposing is really marrying the Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects together and running it around this, which it does make a lot of sense. And based on our discussions with Mr. Thompson, the property owners over there, the potential for immediate development is very low, and the potential for immediate customers is pretty high going up along Highway 68. So I think it does make a lot of sense to look at this green alternate here, run along Frankfurt Road and then up behind the properties. And then part of what Randy's talking about here, you know, just descending this sewer line across Highway 68, this direction right here, could potentially even run spur off when we go. Nice thing is we'll have a lift station down here, so that lift station can be built as deep as needed to pick up as many customers as needed to it. There's a bunch of constructionally costly issues with- Having a lift station planned down here on the county property does open up some potential to get a little deeper into drawing that way. Again, budget is a concern in consideration for court.
So would this eight-inch handle a hotel and some commercial development or no?
I would recommend putting a hotel on eight-inch sewer. But again, where would the hotel go? If the hotel was planned over here, you could very easily extend the pipe right across here into the lift station for relatively low cost, and you wouldn't be limiting yourself with sewer on that. Now, if the hotel was built over here, this water over here is gonna have to be pumped across 68 and again, across I-69, so it would never flow through this eight-inch pipe. It'd be cheaper just to build a force line and shallow. And like, where our plan was for this corridor over here on the north side, this water would be pumped across, and then you have a force line that would run parallel to this gravity and across the parkway.
My hopes for this would be, obviously, development, existing structures, awesome to get them.
Sewer, but the investment should draw development.
And it really concerns me if that's not gonna happen.
Well, again, this is Phase 1, and what this shows here, this purple line is Phase 2, and if you were looking at Google, you zoom out to the greater extent, down here there's a, there's a big draw, you're catching two tributary drain basins down here and a regional lift station that would go down here to the south, it would serve this entire area. This would be a gravity sewer line running all the way down there, so it would be poised for future development down here. I think we call that Phase B, or alternate B. This was, this is alternate C, or alternate E that was proposed. Randy had, I think, served a much larger area, much like the rest of the area. Lot of options, we're talking about a lot, a lot of alternatives through here, so.
Give you an idea of kind of what we're doing with the eight-inch line, Holiday Inn, everything on that side is all feeding to us an eight-inch net. The restaurants, I think, have to go straight in, but we're handling that with eight-inch. Goes into-
But is that because it's-
Push truck.
What can be done, it's just gonna have to be some alterations down the road, is what you're saying?
Well, it depends on what kind of water you're talking about.
And I just, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing that out because it's on, it's off that ramp.
Ten-story Hilton.
Ten-story Hilton, probably not.
2637 641 North, I got just the place for it. Give me a minute to get my bags packed.
How come that's not an option, taking that on north on Frankfurt and then west?
Down 68, looks like.
He's talking about the-
Coming up here, this way.
Yes, yes.
One is the great and the benefit, building this sewer up along here, one, you've got utility congestion, two, getting around the front of these residences and businesses here, all their septic's are in the back, so we run the situation they actually have to pump into that line, so they'd be tasked with having a lift station, small pump system, basically what they have.
So how'd they put the line based at 68, if it's out there?
If it was out here?
Yeah.
Well, it depends. There's a lot of what ifs, I guess, and it depends on how much of the manage you're trying to serve. If the goal of the project is just to get to here, then we could put it as shallow as needed to from the lift station up to multipurpose. But if the goal of the project is to get across Highway 68 to serve a lot of folks on the north side of the road, then the sewer would be much deeper to gravity flow across. I know that really doesn't exactly answer your question, but it's very much meant to tell you 10 feet or 15 feet or 20 feet. Yeah, I didn't know, sorry. Property at the corner of 69, 68, that's vacant commercial, there's commercial next to it, there's campground back there, and there's all kinds of things down through there on the other side, it just wasn't made like that.
But it's, but going in the back, though, is not restricting that, right?
I think if we come-
So I don't know what the-
Well, it's just making access farther.
If we can get this sewer across here, whatever, you know, the, this line here would be controlled and outfall, we'll see if we even want to go with this project. Obviously, this land is all falling back this way, so once you get past these initial fronted properties, it doesn't make much sense to go deeper to pick up other properties. You lose that, and you'd make much more sense at that time to go to the lift station back at the west side of the park and build a gravity sewer up, this draw up here, and you could gravity people back into that gravity sewer system. This area here is kind of analog with the tributary, brick basins here, so initially the thoughts with the way the contour was run, that would probably have a lift back there anyway and have to pump across or pump along 68 to get into the sewer system, that piece of property. Yeah, not a bad problem to have.
Yes. And, you know, I know, I know Randy can attest to this, probably the one thing that I see is a disadvantage for not just the county or the residents, but when I say the county, the fiscal court and our assets that we're trying to get sewer to. But from a commercial standpoint, I-69, the other side of the interstate, we don't have sewer over there. And to me, it just makes sense, you know, and the court's initiative to get sewer across the street. We accomplished that goal, but obviously, we want to have the most impact for everybody that's involved, especially in that area. I mean, there is some potential there. And even future, you know, when you're moving up sixty-eight, I think the best way, it was explained to me, as far as sixty-eight, it drains, if you're on the east side, you know, drains down to, I think, one of the designs was putting a lift station down at the bottom of the park. The other side, the west side of sixty-eight, as you move out away from the interstate, it drains, obviously, by the contour to the west and putting a lift station down there. Now, obviously, those are some future projects down the road for the district. But there's potential growth there for the district. And this is, obviously, if you're a landowner there, there's potential commercial growth for your property. So, it's a win for the county to see some of these properties developed because it's gonna benefit us all. So, you know, taking a step back, sitting down and having this discussion helps us make the best decision. And we definitely want to hear from you as far as any concerns or maybe some ideas that you have and how we can accomplish this. You know, now, as far as funding, we've, you know, we do have some limitations, but we do have some funds for this project if we need to go a little bit further. But, you know, we want to make sure that it's the right project for everybody. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, he was talking about, or he was talking about the utility congestion. And I think the state is gonna help you out on that because when they free-lane that sixty-eight all the way down to Grendy Town Road, then all the utilities will have to be relocated and that'll give us an opening to add the sewer on both sides of sixty-eight, presumably. And, you know, that's, may not be in the next year, you know, I'm not sure when they're gonna do it, but they tell me they're gonna do it. So, that would help out with the congestion quite a bit.
But, but what that would do, though, is, is have us wait, right? Until that happens, is what you're...
I want to understand the parcel that Karen was talking about, who was talking about at the interchange. That's kind of down the road a little bit anyway, is that correct?
As far as serving the property down there, just off the ramps?
After you cross sixty-eight at the park and then back feed down that way?
Uh, yeah, I agree with you on that side, but, but he's talking about the congestion on, on this side.
Okay, I was thinking, he said there was congestion on both sides of sixty-eight.
Well, there's, there's utility congestion, there's power feed, you know, once you up near those ramps. And then, obviously, when the state comes through and widens it, they're gonna be buying right-of-way from residents. So, if you're planning on having a gravity sewer there, you wouldn't want a gravity sewer twenty feet from your front door. And, you know, just getting constructability issues, depending on how much property the state would want to buy for the right-of-way and where their ditches would be. I'm not familiar with the widening project, so I'm talking a little bit out of my comfort zone with the state road project. Certainly happy to look at that. And you're right, that does potentially open up potential there if the state was willing to purchase additional right-of-ways for the sewer expansion project as part of the road project.
Yeah, I don't know if they'd be willing to purchase additional right-of-way, but, but it would give the opportunity, you know, since everything's being relocated, yeah.
And, and definitely, excuse me, and definitely, there are some options. Obviously, the timeline, I don't think we have a definite timeline on that, but there would be some options, I think, to where we can negotiate, to where we have our immediate need for our facility. But if agreed upon, if later there was development, it does make sense. I know I've seen this with Southwest One. If you got a crew out there digging a hole, you know, they're already out there digging it. So, the equipment's there, the personnel are there, the costs are a lot better. But it may be something, that does come to fruition, we actually sit down and agree that if we do do a line, it's not immediate needed, we can do it as... Timetable presents itself. Does that make sense? So, we have an immediate need, what, I think the health department gave us up to two years. So, when I say immediate, we would like to move on a project like this. But waiting on the state, if that ever does develop, I don't know how long that's gonna, how long that's gonna take.
So, but the ones of us that are septic, it's in the back, and if we were to do it in the front, then we're responsible for getting it all the way to the front of our property, okay? Okay.
When you're saying you're on a septic system right now?
Yes.
And it's located in the front?
No, it's in the back.
They're all in the back.
Green line goes right on the funky monkey. And so, um, yeah, I'm just thinking, if we were to do it in the front of the building, yeah, that, now I've got to take all of that, yeah, and get that up to the front.
Yeah, I think for all those landowners on that side, you, you want it in the back, the landowners on the other.
I thought, Ma'nee, you were saying, yeah.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying this, 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 the way that it is, that green behind y'all is best for your side.
Okay, but on the other side?
On the other side, I think, seems to me that y'all...
I just want to conclude that, okay, good deal.
Another alternative is, this is an older area, and I know this house is going now. Some discussions with the folks at Camparama, they may be interested in easement here. There's potential of relatively short distance to Highway sixty-eight here. There's a potential crossing that could be made here and here. Again, we're talking about a lot of options, you know, but there's lots of ways this could go up and be on the need. And obviously, everything's based on customers to pick up and there's a benefit, cost benefit, you need to look at. How much of a cost to pick up one or two or ten customers with a line extension?
Oh, Camparama, that line that comes down the back of that property, why couldn't it come across Camparama's property and come in closer to where you headed with it?
Or I trade to your property, you want to go to nine-one-one, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, it gets closer to the back of the...
By default, we're gonna, this is very, this is the end of the designer design. But on the initial basis, we like to follow property lines if and when possible. That's why it doesn't cut along the backside. If you were acceptable in giving easement here and the curlings were acceptable and giving easement across the back property line and this owner was acceptable in giving this easement, then there's no reason why that line couldn't come straight across.
I think it would be better for me and them if it were.
Now, that's, again, a very much potential if the property owner for acceptance of that on the front. We'd like to know when on the front end before we spend the time for the design to go there.
And you're gonna have two lift stations, one as you cross the interstate and then one on the county property, is that correct?
No, sir.
Idea would have?
We could have one lift station here on the county property and build as far as we can go with gravity with this initial phase. Now, as this develops to the south, there would be a new lift station down here. This is the station to actually go with.
But there's not gonna be one between there and him, in between?
Would you be willing to give an easement up the side of Camparama going to sixty-eight?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, could, then could, like you said, could that cross sixty-eight at some point in the future, right there? Because that looks like it's the closest point to sixty-eight to serve the two commercial and three commercial properties that are there on the other side of the road. Marty Johnson's place, Art Place, and the Stagecoach, Camparama.
Again, I think it's all doable. It really will be up to the district and fiscal board, look at the cost, it'll take four hundred and eighty-five, we'll see if they can get that customer.
What's the timeline for this phase-one?
As the judge mentioned, the schedule's up to them, but I mean, they've got a two-year agreement with the farmer right now with the septic tank that was put in for him off of our field. The original intent was to give the sewer to them within that time. Okay, can I ask you a question? Yes, I got the foot of the line, can we build this foot if it was in a potential future development? We're talking involved market, you know, probably another ten million dollars, depending on how big the size is.
What do you think? Okay, can you talk the rest of it?
Yeah, over here, this is, I mean, that's a huge track, two tracks, part of the area, the north down here. But if someone, you can build a spur, they could, and that business would appear, and this line here would be built in future.
I take it everybody here, I haven't had, I haven't heard anybody oppose of this, but I take it everybody here is obviously in favor of some type of expansion for the properties, okay? We've got everybody's phone number and address. We don't have, as far as the occupancy rating, we're good with the health department, I think, up to two years. What I'd like to do is get with Kyle Pope at District One and share some information with them from this meeting. Maybe even have a future meeting with just maybe some elected officials to discuss potential plans that they may have so that we can identify a timeline. I don't want to get out in front of the state on anything that they have, but there's, there's some really good ideas and it's encouraging to hear that some of the landowners are in favor of, you know, an easement. So, that if we were to come up with some alternate plans, we can make this successful for everybody. And two, Chad, I don't know how long or how hard it would be to come up with a cost. Obviously, I would be interested, the court would be interested to know what the costs. I guess it'd be easier for me to tell you how much we can and then you can kind of plug that in.
Either that or draw lines on the map, whether you want us to look at extension, extending lines or expanding?
On this map?
Draw some lines on there, so they have, like to look at avenues to these, go across sixty-eight?
Absolutely, yeah, to the properties, yeah. In case you didn't hear what he was saying, this map here, you can actually draw on. So, if you will come up, find your property and share the information with Chad and kind of get an idea of where a line would go and then that will help him determine a cost for us to look at as well. So, that's a good idea.
I mean, you have several of the landowners here on that side of sixty-eight for sure, so. They're talking.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
If you guys want to go ahead and get with Chad and talk about your property and then that's, that'll help him help us and we can start that, we can look at doing another.
All right, we'll go ahead and...
Ready?
Yes.
All right, Judge, thanks for letting me talk with you guys tonight. I'll try to be brief and answer as many questions as you have for me. Uh, I wanted to talk to you guys about a grant opportunity. This is called the Kentucky Product Development Initiative. Uh, it's available through partnership with Kentucky Association for Economic Development, uh, the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development and Site Selection Group, who does the grading and scoring of basically the site. So, this grant is specific to product development by way of utility, site readiness, site prep in an industrial park or on a larger site. So, you know, this fits into phase-two of what we're kind of looking at at Southwest One in conjunction with the, the Industrial Development Authority. So, one of the things that we did back in, back in January was we just kind of looked at where we are and what our next steps would be, should we have the opportunity for some kind of funding. And I've pulled this up on the screen for you guys to see. Essentially, what, what we need to do as far as from a marketability standpoint would be to extend Southwest One Boulevard to some of the larger sites in the back. Beyond that, going ahead and where it says twenty-one point seven acres there, uh, look at doing a pad-ready site for what I would recommend, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand square foot facility, expandable. And that opens up the door for us to, you know, at some point, work with KLED on the concept of a virtual building campaign where we can get that in, in front of, in front of companies. So, just adds to the, the product that we have. It eliminates some risk for a company that might be considering relocating. Uh, it makes it a little bit more expedient for them if they, if they choose our site. Uh, it would also allow us to certify that site as a pad-ready site through the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development, uh, which would allow us to, you know, if, if the, if the state is looking for a project that's moving fast, they will sometimes, you know, submit those pad-ready sites, uh, that helps expedite again that process of site selection. So, what I wanted to do tonight was talk to you guys a little bit about some things that the judge and I have talked about regarding PACRO and how that fits in to some of the preliminary stuff that we, that we really need to do before we even really get into the, the discussion of, of this grant application. So, there's two main things that, that the IDA really needs to focus on right now. Uh, one of those things is preliminary engineering for the alternate entrance off of six forty-one. That's, that would be going south on six forty-one toward Murray. And you can see that, I don't know if my arrow will show up there, right here, this is, there's already an entrance into the site and a turn, turn lane, or not a turn lane, but access across six forty-one in place for, you know, where the, where the state has put that in previously. So, what that, what that preliminary engineering will do would basically show us what that alternate entrance would look like as it would follow through to the back of the site.
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
Talking about where the, where they used to, cops used to sit?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what, what that would do would at least show a, an interested party that we have thought about an alternate entrance. Should they, you know, have a certain amount of truck traffic going in and out? And, you know, regardless of this main entrance across from the school, uh, it would give them some reassurance that we've, we've thought through that, that we know what the cost of something like that would be and that we're, you know, we're, we're thinking far enough ahead for that. But I, I also bring this up to say that a lot of site selectors will, will want to see that as they put this site in front of companies. It helps them to feel more confident about knowing that we recognize that, that that's an option for us. Now, we do have about five access points to this entire site. And the reason we're, we're looking at an alternate entrance off of six forty-one is because it gives direct access to that four-lane US six forty-one and that's, that's extremely important, especially for truck traffic. So, that preliminary engineering, we got a, we got a proposal from Megan Farmer-Warkman back in January. Those numbers are still good. That cost is thirty-two hundred dollars. Uh, the other preliminary engineering that we'll need to get done in order to understand the depth of the cost of, of a pad-ready site construction would be the preliminary engineering for the pad-ready site. So, that would help us identify where here the, the facility would best sit, what kind of dirt work would need to be done and excavation. And the cost for that preliminary engineering is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, in talking with Judge Neal, my first question was, is there, are there, you know, some PACRO funds available that could help with this preliminary engineering? Because it does move us a little bit closer to that, that next step. Uh, his response was that he felt pretty confident that, that PACRO would, would be very... His response was that he felt pretty confident that, that PACRO would, would be very interested in helping with at least these two preliminary studies. Today, the Industrial Development Authority met. I discussed this with them and they, they took action to, to actually pay for those two preliminary engineering studies with the caveat that, you know, once PACRO does meet, if we can make application for those funds, that they would be reimbursed for that. So that gets us a little closer to, to the main portion of that grant application for the Product Development Initiative. And that would be a base road, and I talked really a little bit about this, that's not paving the road, extending the road and paving it, it's putting down a good base. Whether it's a culvert or a box culvert, that's up for discussion, across the, the gain branch there. And then get that up to a stopping point where the pad-ready site construction would take place. So just to run through some rough numbers with you guys, the preliminary engineering for the pad-ready site is $3,200. In-kind labor, I know we looked at some numbers that you and Wendy had put together the earliest, earlier part of the year. In-kind labor on all of this together would be somewhere around $122,000. Materials and the face to pad-ready site construction, the total grant app would be, or the total project would be 510, a little bit over $510,000. So if we, this is, this grant is a 50/50 match. So if we go in at 50%, that would, that would mean that we're coming in at a little over 255,000. Of course, the, the grant would be the other 50%. Taking that from some discussion I had with Judge Neal about some expected funds to come in through PACRO, you know, we would, we would be looking at, you know, cash out about $133,000 because we can match that in-kind labor towards this project. So that's a lot of work that we could get done for 133,000 if we can peg, you know, those PACRO funds for that work. Now, the timeline on this, I have to have a letter of intent in by August 24th. The application is due September 4th. The state will be reviewing those applications in November, I believe, with Site Selection Group. And then they will announce the awards in December. Now, I, I'm not sure when the funding will be, you know, awarded, but the, the grant award will be announced in December. This is round two of this initiative. Last year, we didn't see the, the funds actually, or I'm sorry, this, the first round, we didn't see the funds actually come to those award recipients until this, this spring. So it might be next spring before, I, I don't know. It's a pretty competitive grant, but I think we've got some projects there that we, that we could get done, especially as it moves us toward having that virtual building, that virtual spec building. It's cheaper than a spec building. It moves us forward in a way where we can virtually market that to companies that, that might not be traveling at this time. So we're trying to readjust how we, how we do this with COVID being, being the forefront. I think this is something that not only helps us in that respect, but it also moves us into the next level of, of what we're trying to accomplish.
Josh, I got a couple of questions. You said 122,000 in-kind labor and then a total project of 510. So is that other 388, is that materials for the base road?
So, well, I, I'm just going off of the numbers that I have here, Kevin. The total project at 510,000, you split that 50% two ways, that's 255,000, is that right? And then your in-kind labor for the, the county's 50% would be 122,000. So you're only left with 133 that would go toward materials or construction if you were looking at it from that perspective.
And ju- and just so you guys know, with, with PACRO, there are some assets that are available to be sold. It's the timeline. One thing I'm finding with these windows and grants is, is timeline, getting it all to, to match together. But I think we've done a good job to identify a, an option here where obviously the board that met today with the engineering to go ahead and pay that. And then the, once PACRO, you know, once they review it and if they approve it, which I, I believe they will, the PACRO's intent is to get monies out. This is exactly what PACRO was designed to do, so, you know, and then the board would be reimbursed. But as for, as far as when dollars come available, with this timeline with the grant commitment, it may be where the county has to front those monies. And then when the assets are sold and we get the monies, we can reimburse ourselves. So I think that's a good position to be in because we can still continue with this and get access to 50% of those funds coming from the state.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I've asked the question if, you know, when, from the time that the grant is announced, you know, the, the awardees are announced, if, if we would be able to go ahead, in, in this case, in that scenario, go ahead and do the project and then be reimbursed by that grant initiative. I'm still waiting on a definitive answer. But, but I was, you know, it was kind of one of those things where I, I think everybody sees the value in that, especially as you look at construction time periods and, and those things and, and seasons. And certainly if, if we're motivated to do this, you know, waiting a year and a half could, you know, it, it just, from our perspective, we've been fortunate enough that we've been in a position to be ready to go and we found ourselves waiting on potential funding and that's held us back from, you know, moving forward. But I, I think that, you know, this kind of continues with the trend though of, of trying to identify projects that we can do that, that makes sense. It makes sense for the industrial park, it makes sense for the Industrial Development Authority. And it certainly, certainly makes sense from a marketing perspective, but we're also doing it in a way that's very conservative in that, you know, we're, we're utilizing those PACRO funds, those resources that already exist to, to leverage for matching funds. And yeah, we are out the in-kind labor, but, and, and maybe a little bit more on materials, but it, but it's, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity that we have. And if it doesn't fit this time period, then it doesn't fit this time period. That's, that's up to you guys. But, but I would, you know, that's, that's a project before us. I, I think this is, this is a good step. I think the IDA has, has really done a good job of communicating how we do this effectively and responsibly, so.
Josh, I've just got one more question.
No issue.
Go ahead, Jason, sorry.
I was just going to ask about this second entrance. There's no issue about the state giving permission for that second entrance?
No, it's, it's already there. I mean, the entrance is already there, it's already paved. It's just a matter of, you know, putting in the work to do it. The topography's not great right there, so that's kind of the, the.
It'd be okay if you were coming, you know, if you're coming from Murray, right? I mean, you're, if you're going in that way, you're going up, but if you're coming this way.
There's already a crossover in 641.
Yeah.
That appears to go across the adjoining landowner. Is that not an encroachment there or?
Do what now?
Is that not an encroachment to the adjoining landowner? Is there an easement in place already or anything?
Obviously, if we were going to do that project, we would have to work with the, the property owner to see if we could get an easement, you know, to, to put that entrance in. You know, that, that's not been discussed with the landowner and I'm in, by no way saying that this is a project that's definitely going to happen. I think that what I'm saying is preliminarily is, is it would be a good idea for us just to get that design work done and, and have it ready so that should the time come and should it be necessary for a project to have that alternate entrance, we kind of know what to expect. And we can, you know, communicate to them that we obviously see that as, as part of our long-term strategy. Hopefully, that's a short-term problem that we have, but you know, it may be, it may be several years before we have to have that conversation.
Okay, so let me, let me go back to your timeframe then, so I, make sure I understand. So you have to have this letter of intent, intent by the 24th, which is a week.
Yeah.
So we have to decide tomorrow, I guess, whether we want to front that money, that 133, would we ever actually pay that?
I think, I think that would, that might be putting the heart, cart in front of the horse.
Okay.
I think all the letter of intent says is that we intend to submit an application for this project.
Okay.
And then how, how that part of it works, you know, you, you probably want to talk about that sooner than later, but we won't even know, we, I mean, we won't even know who gets funded until December. So there's time there to, you know, to look at that. If we know that PACRO is, is going to be our source for the match, we can communicate that in the, in the application. And, and obviously there would need to be some kind of letter of commitment from, you know, the fiscal court, the judge executive's office, whoever it may be, that says you support the project by way of that, that language being in there. But I don't know that you're in any rush to make that decision right until, you know, tomorrow. I, I don't think that that's, you know, we can write the letter of intent and then, you know, September 4th comes and we don't want to submit the project, we just don't submit an application, so.
So what happens if we go through several of these steps and that landowner says no to an easement?
Well, he's not talking about that though. He's, he's talking about this stuff. That's just a, all, all the second entrance has to do with is one of these costs, right? One of these 2,200.
Yeah, it's just the, it's just the preliminary engineering and design on that. We're not, we're not going to be trying to acquire property or build a road there at this time. It's just, it's just to show that we've got that, we've got that in mind and part of our long-term plan so that if we do have a company come in, they say, hey, you know, we really like the site, but, you know, because of the kind of truck traffic we're going to have in and out, we would prefer to have an alternate entrance so that we're not going out the main entrance across from the school. We can put that in front of them and say, you know, we, we've thought about this and, 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 you know, there is an alternate entrance plan. And if you do get to the point where you choose us as a site, you know, we can, we can look at how we expedite that, that process at that point. So, you know, I, I, I can't speak to.
But the engineering's the road. Connection to the road.
Alternate entrance, that's correct.
Yeah. I guess I'm just not following why they're pursuing that without knowing if they can acquire the property rights or not.
Well, I mean, I, I.
It's there, but it's there currently, it's been there for, I don't know about how long that's been.
Yeah, we actually, we put in for a TVA grant and that, that TVA grant was a, a very sought-after, very competitive site reviewer come out. I believe it was a half a million dollars that they would put towards Southwest One. And the one thing he said was the entrance. It needed an alternate entrance and we weren't selected. And I think the following year, we submitted a grant and we didn't even get to the reviewer stage because of the alternate entrance. And like what Josh is saying, you know, all this is, is due diligence for a company that may come in, look at us and say, you know what, we really need an alternate entrance. Not a problem, we already did the engineering on it. In case somebody did ask that, it's done and it just shows that, you know, collectively this piece of property, we've looked at everything that we can possibly look at. Now, if a company were to come in and say, we want to come here, but we want an alternate entrance, the engineering's done, the next step is we're going to have to negotiate with that landowner.
Yeah.
Right. And, and, you know, let's be honest, we've al- we've always known from the time we started this project with Southwest One that we were going to need more than one entrance going into that park.
Right.
It just so happens that we're fortunate enough to have another entrance onto 641, right?
Right.
We could go off Pickle Lane, Dallas Road, whatever the case might be, but that puts us on residential highway and that doesn't fit the scope of, you know, you know.
The traffic flow, yeah.
So I mean, we've always known that an alternate entrance is going to be needed. Fortunately, we've had a lot of success in developing this park and identifying funding sources and I think that's just the, you know, we've got a project out there under construction right now. So it just goes to speak to the, I guess, the speed of how all this is coming together. But, but yeah, I guess to answer your question, Kevin, if we get to that point and the landowner doesn't want to sell, then we figure out some other way of doing an alternate entrance. I mean, we can't force somebody to sell their property. And I certainly am in that position.
And I think, I think what you're getting to too is, is that, you know, this part of, that part of whatever that we assumed that that would cost would not be spent without knowing that. So it's not like we are putting out money for something and then come to find out that we couldn't.
There's a lot of what is.
I mean, there's engineering, obviously, $2,200 or whatever, but we're not throwing $500,000 at this to not know that.
That was my concern too, was throwing that big amount of money and then.
Yeah.
It would be.
Get to that part and he said, no, it's not going to happen.
That would be completely irresponsible for me to even suggest that we build an alternate entrance what they're not being able to need for.
And I'm not.
Has anybody talked to them at all, the adjoining owner?
No, there's been no reason to at this point. That's why I'm.
Yeah, we don't want to.
I, I'm not, I'm not, we're not to that, that point.
Yeah, and PACRO, just so you guys know, I mean, PACRO, when it comes to these types of sites, when, when you have these reviewers come out, and, and I'm not going to discredit the, the gentleman that came out. He, he's apparently successful in his, his job, but he comes out and he reviews our site and says alternate entrance. We would, you know, I first looked at that and said, well, you got Pickle and Dallas, you got some alternate lane, uh, access points, but what Josh just brought up, it's a residential highway. You've got some congestion with Stave Mill already out off 58, tying in right there at the traffic light on 641. This site is already there. Doing the engineering, like what you were talking about, Monty, i- it's just the engineering, $2,500. That's what PACRO is there for, for the counties. We don't have to dip into our general funds. We go to PACRO and say, hey, this is our plan, this is what we're wanting to do. And the board reviews that, and I can't speak for the board, but this is right up PACRO's alley for economic development. They understand that $2,500, it may never become a secondary entrance, but it's.
And it may be, Judge, that if, that a, a very large project comes in and locates on that entire back portion and doesn't want an alternate entrance.
That's right.
You know, we, we just, those are things we don't know right now. But, you know, from my experience, it's good to have those things in place so that if, if the conversation, you know, happens at the table, we're able to, to, to put that card down and, and have a very honest and candid conversation with that project.
I think, I think we did miss an opportunity with TVA because we were selected for the review, but we weren't selected for the award of the grant because of an alternate. And then I think that, actually, if we would have probably done the engineering, but at that time we had bigger things to think about.
And, and yes, right, we, we had a lot of different priorities that, that have worked out great. And I think that to give that program credit, it is, both of these grants are very, very competitive. I mean, and to, and to give them some credit, I think that what they were, what they were really trying to point to was, hey, you know, it's a great site, it's a beautiful location, we have some concerns about this and that's the ding. Would you, you know, what about some preliminary design or engineering showing what that would look like should a project, you know, need that amenity? And, and that's, that's an easy fix, but at the time, that was not, that was not our priority. That wasn't the project we were applying for. So I, you know, I think that it helps us future, in the future with, with other funding options, but I also think that it benefits us from a marketing perspective, being able to, to show that, you know, as something we've identified as being, you know, part of our long-term strategy.
And, and ultimately, what, what we're also not saying, or what you're also not saying is, is that the, the reason that we, that, that that is on there currently is because there is a, a road there currently. That does not mean that it couldn't come off of us.
Yes.
To where we're don't, we don't, so if this landowner does say no, that doesn't mean we can't move it.
Well, it's got to do with the turner, the turnaround, or not turnaround, but the turn area there. If you wanted in line with that.
I agree, but.
There's a, there's a, I may, there's an easement in place for access to 641 that came with the property.
Well, that's, that's what the lady previously was saying that they're doing there at 69. They're going to move that entrance, that piece of property.
Right.
That's, that's adjustable. I will, I will say, I, I, and I, and I think that something that I like about this is the virtual, you know, especially with COVID and all the Zoom meetings and stuff, but, you know. you know, going out and building an actual 150,000 square foot facility, and then you got to bring these companies in, the virtual opportunity, you know, you do the excavating, get everything set, but then you can actually sit down with that company and say, what do you want? And then you build that virtual design and the costs are minimal.
Yeah, and, and fortunately, we've got a lot of partners that can help with some resources there, you know, from schematics and drawings and, and 3D renderings and everything else. And, you know, one of the really interesting things about the virtual building is that if we, if we move towards something like that after we have a pad-ready site, we can do three different options and make it scalable. And that's on top of us getting, you know, it being in front of companies every, every day. So that, that helps keep the attention on that, it helps keep, keeps the, keeps the activity going, and you're not building a spec building that might sit there for seven years.
And even after COVID, stuff's, I mean, it's, some of this stuff's not going back to the way that it was. I mean, we all realize that, and so.
In a way, we'll be out in front of it.
Guys flying down and spending time or probably.
Yeah. And globally, I mean, we'll, we'll be out in front of that. I like that, that, you know, somebody that want to travel across the seas, they can utilize technology.
Yep.
Will bring you right to Benton, Kentucky.
Oh, it's amazing what can be done with virtual reality and I've seen some.
First Monday in April.
Crazy rendering, so.
Bring you to.
So anyway, that's, that's what I wanted to discuss with you guys, just, just letting you know that this funding opportunity is there. If it's, if it's okay with you guys, if you don't object, I'd like to go ahead and submit that letter of intent. Judge, I don't know what the timeline is on that, on the bigger amount for, for PACRO, but keeping that in mind, I think that's a conversation we can continue to have up until that application is submitted. At, at the end of the day, what we'll need, you know, just because we're submitting the application doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be funded. It's not a freebie, it's very competitive. We'll have to go through, I believe, one or two site visits, at least one, and we'll have to go through a number of phone calls and, and make sure that we're, we're selling this project. So, you know, up until the point that we need that letter of commitment, you know, I don't know how you guys want to structure that, but, but just to reassure you that whatever we can do with PACRO, I think is, would be great.
Yeah.
You know?
We, we put, Erica and I sat down today and we put, and I'll get this to you guys for, for review and tomorrow if we want to discuss this. I think we do need to discuss this and get out in front of it. And we'll also discuss the letter of intent. But we just went through and just identified bond monies where we're at, the OTA investment monies where we're at, and then we've got it listed as far as other monies, but it's breaking out the Port Authority monies, the school reimbursement for the KIA project, and then the insurance from the fire. Just to show you some options, I know Dennis with the IDA, talked with him, I think I mentioned that as far as a payoff on the, the land for Southwest One, the payoff is That rate on that loan is for 30 years at 3.99% and the interest over 29 years is So this is just some information for you guys to digest as far as a discussion, further discussion on how we want to use these monies. And, and just, you know, I, I know we all know this, but Denise is here recording, you know, these monies were, we, we obviously have economic development monies and partners that we use to fund some of these initiatives. So we, we identified some investment dollars specifically for these types of projects. So we'll get that out and you guys can review it and we can discuss it further tomorrow. Y'all got any questions?
Got time to do a draft later and then bring it to us tomorrow?
I've got one drafted.
Yeah.
Bring it tomorrow.
I can, I can, I can bring it tomorrow. Now, just because of, one of the things I want to be clear about, because of the ownership of the property through the Marshall County IDA, we would identify the, the IDA as the applicant for this grant. I mean, it's, it doesn't really make any difference, but I just, if you see that letter, I just want you to be aware that that's, that's what that intention's for. If y'all have any other questions, feel free to call me.
Thanks for answering all the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Appreciate it, gentlemen, ladies.